Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome everyone to the second Coffee and Candidates Forum. I'm Lawson Clary. I'm the executive pastor of Ward Five and on the chamber board. So I'll be moderating today. Before we begin, we'd like to thank Ninja Warrior Coffee House for serving as our coffee sponsor. We appreciate their support and partnership. Also want to point out that we'd like to recognize Mr. Brian Garrison. He is running unopposed in Ward One and he's in attendance today as well for our city council. So let's get this started. We don't have a lot of time and we've got a lot of candidates here. So before we begin, I'd like to remind our candidates of the forum format. The forum is designed to hear viewpoints and positions and is not a debate. Each candidate will introduce in alphabetical order and will be allowed a one-minute opening statement. At the conclusion, each candidate is allowed a one-minute closing statement. We will begin the forum with questions that have been collected in advance from our chamber membership. However, written questions will also be taken from the audience. So make sure that if you have a question, put it on the card and they will come by with the basket and bring it to me to be read. All questions will be asked by the moderator. Each candidate is allowed one minute to respond to each question. The initial candidate to respond is determined by alphabetical order and then followed by a rotation of all candidates. Time limits will be enforced. Cindy will provide a 30-second and 10-second warning, followed by a stop signal when your time has expired. At this time, we will begin the forum with our candidate introductions, beginning with Ms. Brazil, who will offer her opening statement, followed by the other candidates in alphabetical order.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Brazil. I live here in Easyly. I've been a resident for 58 years. I attend Easyly High School here in Easyly. And I am retired from Pickens County. And you have to excuse me because I am a little nervous this morning. But I retired from Pickens County for 38 years. I am married and I have a mother. I am a mother and a grandmother. And I have been out just going around the city and looking at different areas. And I am my agenda for the county city council, Ward Five, is a new leader, new vision, new direction.
My name's Ashley Corso. I'm running for city council, Ward Five. For those of you I haven't had the pleasure to meet, a little bit about me, I'm from Dacisville originally. I'm a graduate of Pickens High School and I have my Bachelor of Arts degree from USC Upstate in Spartanburg. After college, I moved to San Diego with my husband while he finished his career in the Navy. And then after that, we found ourselves in Charlotte, North Carolina, where I had a career for seven years in advertising sales. I've been married to Michael for five years and we have a three-year-old named Parker. I'm, like most of you in here, a local business owner. I felt the calling to run for city council because, quite honestly, I kept looking for somebody that I thought represented me and I felt like it was missing. I think that I can bring gender diversity, some critical thinking and problem-solving skills. I'm fully invested in Easyly and I think with smart growth comes great opportunities and I look forward to hearing your questions today.
Good morning. My name's Bob Fetter and first, I'd like to thank you, the chamber, its members and Cindy as president and driving force for setting up and providing this forum so the public can have a glimpse of myself and my other worthy opponents. Secondly, I want to state how very important I feel every vote on November 5th will be. Four years ago, the Ward Five race was the only one with opposition. There was three of us running, Mr. Wright, the incumbent, Mr. Eller and myself. At that election, I lost by three votes, but that was out of only 129 cast. There's almost 2,100 eligible voters in Ward Five. Finally, I give my why I'm running. Easyly's been the community my grandparents moved to almost 100 years ago. It's where my dad and his brother and me and my three brothers grew up. It's a community that has certainly given to us and challenged us and one to which I want to give back. My pledge, if elected, is that I want Easyly to be at least a little better place when I leave office as it was when I took possession as councilman in Ward Five. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Seth Hunter. I run for city council, Ward Three. Born and raised 30 years ago. Went to Easyly High School, graduated '07. Guess I'm the youngest one on the totem pole here, but looking to bring new ideas to the city. Married, have a little seven-month-old little princess. And graduated from Southern Wesleyan University and active member of Rock Springs Baptist Church.
I'm Ben Massingill. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Easyly. I was born in Mississippi, but at two, I came back, lived in Easyly all my life. Taught at Easyly High, 28 years, and retired a couple of years ago. And now I'm working up at the Pickens Country Club, just watching golfers and playing golf. But I was a councilman about 20 years ago. I think the last time a Chris ran for Ward Three for mayor, I ran for the seat and this is happening again. There's another Chris running for mayor and I thought I'd run for his seat again. At that time, as I said, it was just a low turnout of voters and so I always wished we had a little more turnout for that. But I'm just running because I love Easyly, lived here all my life, want to see Easyly do well. I went to Clemson University, so my wife said I never left the county. I've come back and stayed here. But ironically, this is the first full-time job I ever had was in this branch of Southern Bank and my little office was over in that little corner, or my desk. It wasn't even an office, but just looking forward to helping Easyly grow again and keep going.
Good morning. My name's Rick Tate. Thank you all for coming out this morning and thank you to the chamber for doing this for us and the voters. I am a lifelong resident of the Easyly-Pottersville area. My family's roots go very deep into community. My dad, my grandfather, my great-grandfather and my great-great-grandfather were all laid to rest within the city limits of Easyly. And I expect for my family to be here for generations to come, so I am very invested in the community's future. I'm also the chairman of the Pickens County GOP. I've been elected to that position twice. Not to sound immodest, I was just recently named 2019 County Chairman of the Year by the South Carolina GOP. Outside of politics, I've been in transportation and logistics all of my adult life and a small business owner. So look forward to answering your questions.
I don't use mics very often. Good morning. My name is Pat Webb. I have been in Easyly with my husband for 30 years. We loved it. We still love it. And during that time, I've watched a tremendous amount of change in the city of Easyly and I'm truly proud of what we've been able to do here. And I'd like to see that progress continue. To tell you a little bit about myself, I worked for Greenville County for 20 years. For 10 of those years, I was with the Greenville County Planning Commission as the subdivision administrator. Before that, I worked in Public Works and I worked as the floodplain coordinator as well. I'm really interested in being able to bring good services to the citizens of Easyly at no increase in cost, if we can possibly make that work, and representing our ward in what we hope will project to more growth.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jerel Williams. I'm running for Easyly City Council, Ward Five. A little bit about me, I'm a blue-collar guy. I work at the local Yokohama plant. My family's been around here. Well, I'm a fifth-generation Easyly native, so my mom, grandma, great-grandpa, great-great-grandfather, we've all grew up here in Ward Five district, actually. Just from growing up, seeing how the cities change, I just want to make sure everything keeps going that way and see positive growth through the community and everyone else involved. That's about it.
Thank you, candidates. First question today is going to be a specific one to your ward. What will you do to represent your ward, to make your area a better place? Ms. Corso.
So I think that being a part of city council is... So I think that the role of a city council member is to be able to see the future. And I think specifically, you know, I'm a business owner in downtown and my ward is in downtown. And what I would do to represent Ward Five is to continue to nurture the growth that we've already started to see in downtown, to also help encourage and invite new businesses to continue to come down and be a part of downtown and what we have going on. And just continue what we have, the progress that we've started already, I think, and also just continuing the relationships that we have and creating new relationships with those people.
Thank you. The question is how I would best represent my ward. Over the last several weeks, walking around, talking to folks, shaking hands, haven't kissed any babies yet. I think communication's very important and communication can be either the written word or can be vocalized in person. I would like to get feedback from my ward. The business section's going to be one-on-one, but I hope that on a regular basis, at least a couple, three times a year, that I would be able to have an open house for the folks in Ward Five, listen to their input, give them my opinion of things. Ward Five's a big ward. It spreads all over town and it's very diverse and going to take an open mind and a free-thinking mind, think outside the box.
What will I do to represent Ward Three? It's not about Seth, it's about the people that lives within the ward that I live in. So I feel like with me being here, born and raised here 30 years ago, I've got a good name for myself and I can also be the voice for those people that live within the ward that I live in and share the concerns and bring new ideas that they may have to the table as well.
Having been on the council before about 20 years ago, it's hard to just represent your ward because Easyly's not that big a city, even though we're all growing. Well, you represent Easyly, so when the decisions get made, it doesn't really affect Ward Three. It affects Easyly. I ride through my ward to get the other wards. I don't even know the boundaries. I had to look them up again this year. But we're representative government, so the people in my neighborhood, the people across the street, the people down the road that are in my ward need somebody, a voice, somebody to help represent them on council for the city decisions. And so I just want to make sure they know who I am and can contact me, but I just, it's hard to just divide wards because, like I said, they change possibly every 10 years and you might be representing somebody else before your term's out. But just being aware of who's in your ward so they know you and they can contact you without having to go straight to the mayor, councillor, administrator.
Having been involved in politics and especially around here for the last better part of a decade, the biggest obstacle, the biggest problem to me, or two of the biggest problems, is apathy and lack of information to the voter. So I think the biggest thing I could do, or one of the biggest things I could do for the constituents in the third ward is outreach. And to bring to city council something I've done with the GOP, make sure that the county council meetings are videoed and put up on YouTube or made easy, have easy access to and get them out on social media and get the information out and involve the people. See if we can't do something about getting more information and with more information, people become interested and you get rid of apathy and get more people involved. You can't have self-governance unless the people that want to govern themselves are involved and they have the information to do it with. So outreach, social media and getting the videos out of the county, city council meetings on a regular basis so people can actually see what's going on.
Again, good morning. What I would like to see done is to, excuse me, update our comprehensive plan. There's been a tremendous amount of growth and change in our city and the comprehensive plan has not been updated. We have growth corridors where the pressures are great. Do we have the infrastructure in place to be able to support that growth? Do we have all of the supporting data for that? The high school being down Highway Eight is a draw for more growth in that direction. The Brushy Creek corridor is also growing. We've got the 153 corridor. All of those need to be reflected in our comprehensive plan.
What I'd like to see done, if I'm elected, would be just having more transparency for allowing the people to be able to voice their opinions because as a councilman, I feel like you're the representative for the people. Like, that's your job to speak on their behalf. So just being able to allow the people to reach out to you more and have more communication lines so they know what's going on in the ward and the city as well.
Ms. Brazil.
What I would do is move, better serve the ward by as a leader, I want people to be able to voice communication, communicate for and get into the boards and see what the people need and what needs to be done. And as a motivator, to motivate people to get involved, do things and have things that they can come to, like open house and have maybe my, what I would like to see done is within the ward is to get people into the, out of the ward and let them join a advisory committee. And that committee will actually work with me on what needs to be done and what needs to be thought in the community. And as I've been going out and putting up signs and meeting people, there's a lot of things out there. Some people need and some people don't. But as a whole, as a city of Easyly, we want it to be better and we want everything to come together as one.
Now, Mr. Ferguson just came in, so if you'll pass the mic to him. Mr. Ferguson, the question is if you'll introduce yourself and then the question is what will you do to make the ward, your ward, that you will be representing a better place?
I'm Eliot Ferguson. Apologize for being late, but the job duty's called, you know? But I'm a permanent resident of Ward Five and I would, I've been in this ward since 1872. We've been landowners in this ward, same place, same date, same time. To what we would do as a people, if I got elected, would break down this stigma that Easyly's not Easyly anymore. I believe Easyly is still Easyly, we're still a community. I would fight for that to ensure that that green wave pride is promoted, that that green wave pride is brought back. And I believe that we're losers as people as protecting us. I believe that we're a thriving community with our economic growth and we'll continue that. I also believe that we would look and provide for our senior citizens better. We would strive to make sure our senior citizens have what they need to feel safe in the community and to thrive. Also, we would look at programming for our young people in this community. We would make sure that our young people have an opportunity to be successful in this community.
All right. So we'll move on to the next question and Mr. Fetter, you'll be the first one to answer. The city continues to see enormous growth. How do you propose the city manage that growth? Examples are increased traffic, increased use on city resources like police and fire, et cetera.
Okay, the question is how to control the growth?
Well, the city continues to see enormous growth. How do you propose the city manage that growth?
Okay, that is a big challenge. That's the big elephant in the room. How to manage the growth that Easyly's going through. Traffic, for example. I know the city right now is in communication with the education in the county to get the cars off the street at Forest Acres and West End Schools to do something similar to what they're doing at the high school, but that still doesn't take care of the traffic part. I was with Mr. Holcomb in his office not too long ago and he said within the next year that he's anticipating at least close to 1,000 permits to be issued for homes, condos, townhomes and apartments. That's going to be an increase of another 2,000 cars on the streets, at least in the next 18 to 24 months. It's going to be increasing in population, so we've got the infrastructure to take care of. Unfortunately, as far as the streets are concerned, many of them are managed by DOT, so we've got to coordinate with them. We need a long-range plan for that.
I think that the police department, the fire department have done a great job in adjusting to change and I commend them for that. And I can speak to that from personal experience to their responding to incidents we've had. I do have a concern with the trafficking in the communities, unsafe for our older people right now. Members of my family in particular have had accidents, in particular on Hillcrest Drive. And so I would like to see the trafficking be addressed. And also, I think that the combined utility has done a great proactive job in looking to make sure they provide services for our community too. So I do think the city right now is in an up-and-up position on that. We just need to address the traffic issue.
As the city continues to grow, I'm a firm believer in growing the city. I also, as we expand, we need to, as a city council, along with the mayor, continue to do a study, see where it's feasible for taxpayers and how it can benefit them and us financially and just continue to bring better ideas to the city. And like I said, biggest thing on this question for me is, is it feasible for us as city council and as city taxpayers? That's all I've got to say about that.
Well, we all know that if you're not growing, you're dying, so Easyly needs to continue to grow, but you just don't want to grow to where you have the growing pains that we could see in some other cities. As a teacher, you know, you see that firsthand when the school's not prepared for it. So I'd like to see the city, the school district and the combined utility because of the infrastructure work together. I think Clemson's already had to stop building because their sewer capacity stopped. So there are limitations unless we see that. So I think Ms. Webb mentioned the comprehensive plan. We just need to have a five and a 10-year plan, what's coming. But I really think working with the school district and the combined utility more. Obviously, the state roads aren't going to get better because they don't want to have any more pressure on paying the gas taxes or anything there. So we're probably going to be stuck with the roads we have. We just need to try to manage where the growth's going and some of the traffic patterns there. But I just think working with the schools and the utility company to see where we can keep growing and where we need to be careful and slow down.
Thank you. I think what we're talking about here is quality of life. Manage the growth so we don't mess up a good thing that we've already got here. And what got me involved in politics to begin with almost 30 years ago was my child. I've got a grown daughter. And education is where my mind tends to go first. So in light of that, I've got a couple, I know a couple of people, have a couple of friends on the school board and I talked to John Eby. And from what they tell me, where we can handle the growth much from a school standpoint is over around Carlsville. Those are the schools that can handle the growth best and now have the room. We've got to consider what we're going to do to a school if you throw up a big housing development right next to a place where we're trying to get the teacher-student ratio in line with where we'd like for it to be. So that's my first concern, is education. And the school board runs the schools and this is city council, but you can't, you don't operate in a vacuum. What we do affects the other parts of the county and other parts of our lives. So you've got to take a look at the big picture. The other thing I would add as far as infrastructure goes, I would support the idea of a one-time user fee for divisions, subdivisions coming in to finance the infrastructure needs that will be created by an additional subdivision.
One of the best tools we have to manage growth is our zoning ordinance and I'd go back to that zoning ordinance when annexation requests are brought in. We need to make sure that our annexation and zoning requests are consistent with where our infrastructure exists already and we have to note what that impact is going to have on the surrounding roads, schools, all of the other contributing partners in that growth. I think we're going to have more and more pressure on several different corridors. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to tell developers where they're going to come. We have to react to them and so we have to be ready to react.
The way I see it about managing of the city is, as a longtime member of the city, like I know ways to get around. Some of the other people, they know ways to get around, stay off of the main roads and I kind of like the idea of how, I'm not sure if everybody uses Google Maps, but they offer alternate route just to get away from all the traffic. And that's one way that I think would help the city, but as far as the growth of it, just making sure utilities are up to par so they can handle more people coming in. That way, we won't just be at a standstill and have to stop our growth automatically because we're not able to handle it.
I'll come back down to Ms. Brazil. If y'all pass the mic down there and remember the question is, the city continues to see enormous growth. How do you propose the city manage that growth?
The city of Easyly will continue to grow, I'm sure, because it's growing rapidly now because we do see housing and apartments and all businesses coming into Easyly. And the traffic will get overwhelmed, I'm sure. We just need to find a way to look into traffic flow, whether it's engineering-wise or police, fire, you know, if everyone can get together and as a whole and work together to see what we can do to prevent the overflow of traffic in the areas that are actually overflowing. Sometimes we may want to consider putting businesses or houses in a different area that has less traffic flow. But I feel that if we work together with this traffic and see what we can come up with as a community and definitely not leave the community out because, as I say, communication is the key.
So the city of Easyly right now has a strategic plan that's in place. It goes through 2020. And the first thing on that strategic plan is to come up with a comprehensive plan. And I think that the new mayor and the new city council have to work together to come up with this comprehensive plan that details things like traffic and housing and utilities. Speaking of utilities, I do think that the communication from the mayor and city council with the Easyly Combined Utilities Board is going to be key as we continue to grow because city council approves that budget. And so as city council, we have to make sure that Easyly Combined Utilities has the resources and the tools that they need so that they can get ahead of putting in the proper utilities that we need. Something that I think when we talk about traffic, everybody gets really nervous and scared about it, but congestion on roads is really not a bad thing. It's a good thing. There's a lot of people here and it puts a lot of people in front of our businesses and as a local business owner, that's what I want. So I think if we can continue to get more local options for people, local places for them to shop and dine and go to the farmer's market and those kind of things, it does keep people off the road. So I think that that should be part of the plan as well.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Ferguson, you're gonna be leading off with this question. Let me start it here. Do you approve of the current food truck ordinance, or do you feel it should be amended? And if so, how should it be amended?
Right now, I think that this is a person in the community who benefits from it. So, I think the ongoing relationship between the brick-and-mortar and the mobile unit has to be brought to the table. I think the ordinance is there, but I don't think anybody really brought it to the table when they made the ordinance. So, I think we want a true indication of how the relationship should go. We should bring the parties together, not just make the ordinance. Like I said, I run a local business. I have it for years, and we've benefited from it. But I think if you really wanna break down the tension between brick-and-mortar and mobile, you need to bring the two units to the table when you're making the decision. To do rectify, that's my perspective.
You repeat the question, please.
The city continues to, well, do you approve of the current food truck ordinance, or do you feel it should be amended? And if so, how should it be amended?
The food truck, in my opinion, again, this is my opinion, it's a good idea. I'm not a small business owner, but if I was a small business owner in the food industry, I would like to start off as a food truck, see how I do as my business. If my business continues to expand in the city and I continue to see revenue, then I would then go to a brick-and-mortar and look to getting somewhere to continue expanding my business. So, good idea, continues to give more options to the people, and also, just, yeah, just more options.
I can honestly tell you, I haven't read the whole ordinance, so I don't really know the ins and outs of it, but I know it's been in effect now at least a year or so, and it's probably a good time to evaluate, you know, sit down and see the pros and cons because I've heard a little bit about both sides since I announced I was gonna run. The local people that have had businesses, the brick-and-mortar here for a long time, might not like the way it's worked out, might not like the way where it's parked, when it's parked. So, just sit down and let's see. There are definitely places for it, but maybe they're not being utilized the way we thought it was gonna be. Maybe advantages were taken in certain areas. Let's have a little committee. Like I said, have the people sit down and communicate, but let the brick-and-mortar people and the people who are benefiting from the food truck, you know, sit down and share why it needs to stay or why it needs to go instead of just, let's put it in and go. Anytime you do something on a trial basis, I'd say, it could be amended. And I'm sure there's some good things to do with the food truck, that we can keep it. But also, I'd like to let everybody have some input and not just, let's pass it and get it going.
I haven't read the entire ordinance either. I have listened to Brian and the rest of the city council debated at a couple of the city council meetings. And I understand, if you've been here since, God, the first meal I ever had was on Main Street, and the restaurant's still there without naming any place. But I can understand a food truck being stuck in your parking lot next to you and you being upset about it. You know, I get that. I think the key here is to be flexible and not be, you know, like the iron hand, we've made up our mind and that's it, live with it. That's a bad attitude to have. It's supposed to be representative government. The first idea that came to my mind would be put the food truck somewhere where there's not any restaurants. So, you're opening up an area where, you know, put one where it would be more convenient for people, where they wouldn't have to walk as far maybe, or, you know, away from the other restaurants, you know? Try to be fair to everybody. That's just the first idea that pops in my mind, but I do understand the brick-and-mortar people that might be upset, not wanting somebody that comes in every once in a while and taking some of their business away. So, I get both sides of the argument. I've been an entrepreneur a large part of my life in the free-market system and let the market prevail. I believe in that. But there's room on both sides of this argument for a compromise, I think.
Again, I have not read the entire ordinance, but I think food trucks are very important, particularly now that we are attracting people from out of our community. People from California, people from Pennsylvania are coming here and enjoying the doodle. As we bring people on a tourist basis or whatever, to have those is very comforting. That is something that they're accustomed to in the DC area, in all of the California areas. So, I'm glad that we have the food trucks. If they are a problem or predict a problem with the brick-and-mortar stores, let's work, as you said, with some consensus, get an understanding of what is happening, and are we really reducing the profits that are being made on Main Street? Let's look at it.
Yeah, I as well. I haven't read the ordinance, but I kinda agree with the food truck idea because I know on social media, they have a big following. Like, a lot of people just, they go where the truck goes, and so that automatically will bring more attention and business to our city. So, the idea of where to put them, that's the big talk, like, maybe not directly on the street, maybe, like mentioned before, put them in an area and just let them all park right there and let the people come and see for themselves if they like them.
Ms. Brazil?
I have, because I have a problem with food trucks. I think they can be for good use. My thing is, with the brick-and-mortar, I understand they're, they're, I understand where they're coming from also because, you know, that one's...
There we go.
As I was saying, I understand the brick-and-mortar also, as everyone else has said. If we should come together for those who are actually needing food trucks for their businesses in order to have food for the business, then we can just come together and communicate and decide where we should park the food trucks. Because as we're growing, Easely is growing, and things changes, and it's just time for the changes to happen, then we just come together as one and just decide where we should park the food trucks because there's other places in Easely. If we just, and even if we have a time that they sit there, maybe figure out that certain time of day so that it does not interfere with the other restaurants that are in the city of Easely.
So, I'm very familiar with the food truck ordinance. I did serve on the food truck committee that Mayor Bagwell and the city council agreed upon putting together. And I served on that committee along with other restaurant owners and local business owners in Easely. And the, I do agree with the food trucks. I agree with the placement of the food trucks right now. I think that there is not a better compromise. There were many going back and forths on where they should be and how they should be and what time they should be there, and that was actually agreed upon by the food truck committee, which did include some of the brick-and-mortar restaurant owners and other members of the community and council. So, I think right now, it is a great thing. I think that according to the hospitality tax, all the brick-and-mortar restaurants are seeing a success with it as well. I think it brings option, more options and opportunities to bring more foot traffic to Easely, which is gonna be a success for everyone.
The issue of the food trucks has been on the table with the council for more than a year now, and there's been a couple of compromises, a couple of different tries and everything. The current ordinance was approved two months ago, but it can't be ignored in the future. It is contingent with certain businesses downtown. Everyone needs to compromise. The first try was to put the food trucks where there aren't any restaurants. That didn't work. Food trucks didn't get any business, so they quit coming. What's working now seems to be agreeable to everyone, but again, it needs to be revisited on a regular basis, get input from all parties. It is good to create more feet on the street for downtown Easely. That's where my heart is, where my parents had their store.
All right. The next question will begin with Mr. Hunter. What key elements do you feel may enhance Main Street in Easely?
Key elements, I believe, is bringing more small businesses, successful small businesses. But how do we do that? My opinion would be to, for the city to get a full-time recruiting coordinator. Let them do a little, what they call a SWOT analysis, which would be the strengths, witnesses, opportunities, and threats of the local businesses, and just continue to try to see where we can be more profitable and be able to bring in, like I said, more successful small businesses to produce more revenue.
If we could put a big bridge over the railroad tracks would help tremendously. I've, actually, about 30 years ago, was involved with some of the redevelopment downtown and helped start some of the buildings, and we were building apartments upstairs, trying to get that going. I think y'all, some of you know Dave Watson. I was, helped him a few times, but downtown is just incredible what it's become, but when I sit at some of the restaurants downtown and the train rollers by, we're just stuck with it. We've become apart. It rode by a while ago. I sit at church and hear it. It's just downtown. That's gonna always be there. So, behind it, where we're at now, this old market square, man, I just think that's the most underutilized thing that we have in Easely, that we spent a lot of money on in the last 30 years. The amphitheater, everything back here to kinda get it away from the tracks. Now, that doesn't help the guys on the other side over there much, but I love what they've done in the last few months with the downtown area. Gonna have some trees one of these days. But right now, I think downtown, it just, it needs to stay where it's going. It's doing fine. It just has to be watched because it can get out of hand, and the more residents we can get downtown, the better, I think, too.
Very good stuff. I like the idea of the bridge, pedestrian. There is, at some point, there needs to be some way to connect both sides of the, safe way to connect both sides better of Main Street. That's definitely something that needs to happen somewhere along the line. But that aside, and this is not meant as a criticism, I'd like to review and know what the process is for starting a business in downtown Easely. What do you, what's the relationship between city hall and a new business? Go through the system, try to streamline it as much as possible. Like I said, this is not meant as a criticism. I've never started a business on Main Street in Easely, so I don't know. But my idea would be to make it as business-friendly as possible so those empty stores on storefronts on Main Street in Easely have something in them, prospering, and we are growing, and all the growth is not just out on what I refer to as the bypass. Make it easy as possible for new businesses to come in, open up, and that just helps the other businesses that are there. You talk about increases foot traffic downtown, that's the way to do it. Have good, prosperous businesses, and make it easy for them to get here.
Downtown Easely is the heart and the soul of the city of Easely. We've got to preserve it. We've got to enhance it as much as possible. I would love to see us have a boutique hotel down here to bring people into town. Unfortunately, we looked for a way we could build another bridge to go over the railroad tracks. We can't get rid of them. They're there. That's part of what we are. I like what we're doing with the fencing along the railroad tracks. It's an enhancement, but it is a very complicated process in dealing with the railroad tracks. I also think that we need an historic district overlay so that we can make sure that our lovely homes are not cut down, destroyed, and built back in crackerbox sorts of things.
Like everyone's mentioned, the railroad tracks is just, that is what it is. This, that's what this city was built on, railroad system, so just the idea of bringing, like everyone's saying, more business to the area, small business, or just things that people are looking for, but they're having to go somewhere else to do. Those are the type of things I think would make Main Street a lot more, you know, appealing to everybody, just being able to come out, walk around, enjoy what we have to offer here, so.
Ms. Brazil?
The key element to me would be actually to just basically stay as it is. Like I said before, Easely is growing, but just find out why and what we can do to bring new businesses into downtown Easely and find out what the problem is. Because downtown Easely is a historical part of Easely, and we do want to keep it that way, but we do also know that it is growing. So, to get out and just find out why these businesses turned down, not coming, is it because of the rent maybe high, or, you know, maybe it is the train system, but like we said, the train system's not going anywhere. That's gonna be there. So, we just need to just find out why the businesses are not coming and what we can do to solve the problem, to get them encouraged and encourage them and motivate them to actually come into the city of Easely. Because we are, you know, a real homely town, and we want it to stay just as family-oriented as we can, you know, have it to be, because family, to me, is what Easely is about.
So, I think the key elements to enhance downtown would be to offer some incentives for new businesses to come down. I know that was really important to Michael and I when we opened our business here and we worked closely with the city, and that was something that helped us move forward in wanting to open our business here. I think if we can continue the efforts with Party on Pendleton, last year was, or this year was the first year that we did it, and I think it was a huge success, and I think that it can be something that Easely is really known for and that keeps people wanting to come down to Easely versus maybe going to Greenville or Clemson. I also think that we should encourage more high-density, both affordable and market-value homes around downtown. To me, that's what makes a downtown a downtown, is that people live within close proximity, that they don't have to jump in their car, they can just walk downstairs and enjoy all the things that a downtown can offer.
To me, a key element to enhancing downtown Easely, Main Street if you will, is to bring more retail. The city has had incentives for businesses. It needs to be tweaked. It needs to be continued, in my opinion, but it needs to be directed to retail. We've got more restaurants downtown than we've ever had, but they need support also. They need the feet on the street. After 5:00, we need businesses to stay open. We need to bring people downtown. One way to do that is to copy what other towns are doing. Landrum, Little Town of Landrum, for example, 4,000 people there. There's a restaurant in downtown Landrum that serves more than 4,000 people a week. We can do the same thing here with good growth, good incentive, strong town, a strong downtown business association, which we're working on.
With the population change in Easely, a lot of people moving and influxing, and I think we need to enhance downtown through economic diversity, and diversity not defined in color, race, but in products we offer. And also, too, Ward 5 has the most permanent tax base in the city of Easely. And right now, downtown, Easely's not taking advantage of that. We need to provide for those individuals within their given needs. So, if you can cater to them, you've been in your back door, I think that downtown would flourish once again. It is the most stable tax base in the whole city of Easely, Ward 5.
Thank you. Don't forget that there are no cards on the tables. If you have any questions, Marissa will be by to pick those up. Just hold them up if you have those, and she'll bring them forward. All right, this next question's gonna start with Mr. Singil, and it is, "Do you feel that continued growth of the doodle trail is important to the success of Easely?" of Easly?"
I've actually only ridden the doodle trail one time. My son and I did it a year ago, and I loved it. My wife and I have walked on it since then, halfway there and halfway back. Or actually, halfway there and then my mom came and brought us halfway back. It was a little further than we thought. But I think it's awesome. I really do. My mother's from Pickens. When it dropped us off, my son and I were able to ride on into Pickens a little while and go see where my grandmother's house used to be. So I think it's probably my favorite thing to start exploring more, because I do wanna start biking a little more with my retirement time. But I think the doodle trail is tying easily in Pickens. Biking is such a big deal, but the fact that it's marked every tenth of a mile really helps me. The hard part is, you know, bringing it into Easly and stretching it on through the cemetery and on into town, and it gets a little hairier because there's a little more traffic. So we have to just try to manage that. But I really, I really like the doodle trail, my connection with Pickens and the fact that it's just, you don't have to go to the Swamp Rabbit now, you can do something right here in Easly.
I think it's becoming a trademark. Easily doodle trail kinda goes together. I think it's interesting and nice that the new project out here with the old Easily Mill that we're putting 128 apartments or condos, whichever, they're putting a spur from doodle trail right into the middle of the apartment complex, and that's bringing people in. And having spent much of my life behind the steering wheel, trust me, I like anything that takes the bicycles off the road and puts them on a trail. But I think it's a wonderful idea, and people enjoy it, and it's, let's get back to the family thing, it's wonderful to have something you can do as a family. And that is something, and get everybody on a bicycle. I can't think of anything that'd be more fun, except maybe going to the lake and skiing. But as Easly grows, the doodle trail will grow with it. And like you said, I'm interested to see and look at plans on how to develop it downtown and build stuff up around it downtown, the way they did in TR, bicycle shops, and, you know, stuff specifically for the bicycles. So I think it'd be interesting to see where we can take it.
The doodle trail is truly part of Easly, and I'm very, very proud of what we have been able to put on the ground. The way that it was built, the way that it cost as little as possible, but we've got terminals on both ends that attract people. I've been in restaurants and seen the folks who are riding the trail, and they're coming from all over the country. We need to connect more parts of the city. I'm glad that the redevelopment of the silos downtown is going to connect. All of that needs to be drawn together, and we're being known all over the country for the doodle.
Yeah, the doodle trail, I see it firsthand every day, how much is starting to change easily, because I ride by there every day to and from work, and as always, cars out there. There's kids playing in the little, the new park that they built. Like I said, families, you see little kids on bikes with their helmets on with parents, and I think, I think it's one of the best things Easly's done in the past 10 years, so. I mean, I myself, I get on it every now and then when I get a chance to, but the expansion of it is really gonna be a thing to see, just to see how and where it's gonna go, other than where the silos are now, so. I'm just, I mean, I'm proud of it, because like she said, a lot of people from other places are talking about it, they're asking about it, and just the growth of it, I think, will be a big key to bringing more to Easly as well.
The doodle trail, I think, has brought a lot of business into Easly and a lot of people into Easly. And I think they come just to see what the doodle trail is about, and they actually come back because they enjoy the scenery and the route that it takes from Easly to Pickens and other different parts of the city of Easly. And I have used the doodle trail much myself. My family and I was walking, and then my granddaughter, she goes up and plays on the playground that's there. So it has brought goodness to the city of Easly. And I'm excited to see where else we're going to go with it as far as different routes around the city, to actually come from one end of the city to the other end of the city going toward Pickens. So I think the doodle trail is a, was a good choice to come to the city of Easly.
So I think that the doodle trail is, the question I think was, is the doodle trail...
So it was, "Do you feel that continued growth of the doodle trail is important to the success of Easly?"
Okay, I believe that it is 100% important to the success of Easly. I think that expanding the doodle trail and being able to connect it to other neighborhoods that are, you know, over to J.B. Red Owens or out towards Brushy Creek, if there's ways to do that, I think that would be very important for Easly. I think maybe even at some point, having a conversation with Greenville County and figuring out how do we connect the doodle trail to the Swamp Rabbit, and maybe that's part of a long 10-year vision plan. I know those things aren't done overnight, but I do think that the doodle trail brings a lot of people and businesses and families to Easly, and I think that it is very important to the success of Easly.
If you compare how quickly Easly and Pickens developed the first part of the doodle trail, it was light speed compared to what Greenville and Travelers Rest went through. They almost went through a decade to open. We went through two years. And the continued growth of the doodle trail, the extensions of the doodle trail, I believe part of the plan is to take it eventually to Pope Field, if they can ever find a way to go over or under the bypass. It's an enhancement not just for the folks that use the doodle trail, it's an enhancement for Easly. It's another thing to bring people here, retirees here, businesses here. It's something that is an outdoor entertainment for a family, for individuals, that gets us outside rather than staying inside in front of a computer or something. So the continued growth of doodle trail, the fact that they are extending it to the old Easily Mill past the silos, need to do more of that, and it is certainly important for the continued growth of Easly.
Well, I believe in physical exercise, so anytime you can improve the cardiovascular, you're doing good. So I think that we've done that part of it, now we need to take it, and as one of the constituents said, we need to develop bike shops off of it, we need to develop training centers off of it, we need to develop other activities off of it. And also, we need to make it more user-friendly for our children, where they can have access to it without having parental guidance as much. I'm saying let it be an age-specific, but I do think there's room for expansion, but it's doing a great job. Anytime you can promote cardiovascular, it's doing a great job.
Ditto to what everybody here on this table has said. The doodle trail's done a lot of good for this city. I love it, but I hate riding it. I've ridden it one time, and I will never ride it again. But I will promise one thing, is, and I continue to do, is I go up, see my brother up in Pickens. When I pass that, I see people riding and walking it and running it, and I send a word, lift up a prayer, because I know what they've been through. I know what they're going through. But we, as a city, have to have a financial plan, come together, what would be feasible for us, and how it can benefit taxpayers and all that stuff as well, to be able to continue to expand that. But yes, I believe the doodle trail is a great thing, and it will continue to be a great thing.
Do you have a question? Okay. All right, I've got a few questions coming in. We've only got time for a few more. All right, so I'm gonna do it in the way in which they came in here. So Mr. Tate, we're gonna be starting off with you. Easly is a two-headed beast, downtown and the 153 corridor. What efforts will you take to ensure both areas complement and help each other and not compete with each other?
Not compete with each other, I don't think is a possibility. The nature of, if you're talking in a business sense, the nature of business in a free market is competition. I don't wanna get rid of competition. It's healthy. It's what gives us the best products for the best price and improved products, so competition, I don't wanna get rid of competition. As far as controlling the two-headed beast, it's my understanding that there is already a plan in place to get a master planner in place to, there's 400 acres to be developed out on 153, and bringing in a master planner to look at that and figure out how to, the best way to develop the property out there, which I think is a good idea, goes back to what we were talking about to begin with, the controlling of growth. Our guide, I like guide better than control. We need to guide the growth where it needs to go the most, as much as we can, and have smart growth. And the only other thing I would add to it, as far as 153, we need to be pushing this SCDOT and our state delegation to finish 153 all the way to 183. As much as we can encourage that, I would definitely get behind that.
I'm not sure I understand the exact meaning of the question, but, and I don't see it as a competition between the two, it is part of the same organization. The extension of 153 was intended and styled to bring more traffic toward downtown, not avoid downtown, but bring it through to go on to Pickens, to make that easier. And that relieves some of the traffic problems that we've had on 123. How do we work together? Let's work together, we'll grow. Do we have the infrastructure in that area to support that kind of growth? And we need to lay that foundation.
I think they both will complement each other, because the fact that downtown is already established, so it's not gonna get too much bigger than what it already is. Now, 153, that's the part that the focus needs to be on, as far as what's gonna go there, how we're gonna do it, and make sure it's set, sets up for success, instead of we make it something and then it just falls apart. So I think the key right there is making sure both of them get equal amount of attention, but at the same time, not neglect the things that they already have.
Ms. Brazil?
I really don't think there are any competition, as the other ones have said. I think it's just a thing of, when that part of the town, the city, is to actually help the traffic flow. So, and I think that's basically what that area is, is actually based in their reconstruction and that type of thing, what they're doing on that, on that end of town, is trying to help the traffic flow and to better serve the city of Easly and other parts of the town itself and other parts of Pickens County. So when we talk about traffic flow, when you talk about the Clemson games and that type of thing, actually, they're trying to figure out a way to where that traffic flow can become better and not be so congested there. So I don't think it's like a competition between the two, I think it's just trying to help and see what they can do to make things better.
Like Pat said, I don't know if I fully understand the question about it being a two-headed beast, but I do think that Easly is really unique in that we are able to have 123 with our big-box stores, and we draw people from Pickens and Liberty that don't have those options to go to, and I think we need those to be successful. But in the same sense, I think that we have to just continue to focus on downtown and allowing downtown to be our unique and quirky and locally-owned businesses. So having those two separate spaces aren't necessarily bad, in my opinion. We need both of those to be successful, but it is nice that we're in a position where we can actually have both of those spaces coexist together.
I don't think I would call it a two-headed beast. I would say more that one can complement the other. Downtown Easly has its identity, it's got its history. The 153 corridor is going to have to develop its own identity. We've got an identity along 123 with certain types of shops and stuff, but it's more an enhancement for the overall growth of Easly, in my opinion, to have these different business districts, to have each one being a little bit different. Someone can go from one to the other. Look at Beaufort, South Carolina, at the coast, they've got downtown with its historical, as Ashley put, quirky thing, and you've got the outlying areas. We can do the same thing here at Easly. It takes planning, it takes foresight, it takes looking to the future.
I think with the two-headed beast idea is basically consumer preference, so if you look at the consumer preference and the stigmatism of the community at the current basis led to the two-headed beast, so if you can break down the stigmatism, you can break down the consumer preference. So if we can do that and look at it not just being traditional old Easly versus new Easly, but looking at it as being Easly, then we can get the consumers to make intelligent choices as to what is, whether the best product is and not your preference. So that's what I'm looking at.
Repeat that. Two-headed beast?
Easly is a two-headed beast downtown 153 corridor. What efforts will you take to ensure both areas complement and help each other and not compete with each other?
Yeah, I don't see it as a competition. I see it as it's continuing to grow towards the downtown area. As 153 continues to grow, Easly continues to grow, everybody's happy, everybody's successful, so.
I'm still slightly confused, because I was thinking he was gonna say 123 beast, because unless we've annexed a whole lot of property, we don't have much control over 153. It's definitely affects Easly, you come in that way, Easly's the first town, but our council won't have much to do with that area. They gotta work with Anderson County, part of Pickens County, it's kind of a logistical mess anyway, but as they grow it, and it does come towards Easly, you know, we need to embrace that, make it more welcoming. I love to come into the city from Greenville and see the Easly signs. I didn't know we started that far out, but we do, you know, we want people to know they're coming into Easly. I agree with the 123 probably is a little more of a congested mess than 153 that we can maybe work on. So I think that's where our emphasis will have to be. We can encourage Anderson County, we can encourage Powderville to incorporate whatever they can do to logistically make 153, but we don't have any thing we can do about most of that. So we are gonna compete with them downtown, so let's just make downtown better to take away that business from 153.
All right, we will move on to the next question. Ms. Webb. Question's this, "We've heard your goals, but how do you envision your legacy, especially for your specific ward and the greater good of the city as a whole?"
That's a big one, and I know I'm old, but I really haven't looked at my legacy that much. I would like to see us have an orderly development in our ward. I'm worried about the development commercially along Highway 8 all the way out to the high school. I would like to see that very, very congested at school times corridor opened up and preserved against commercial development in particular. That bothers me at the elementary school and at the high school. So in that, in my ward would be one of the things I'd be proud of, if we could keep that moving.
Me, myself, I'm not really worried about my legacy, because it's more about the city as a whole and everybody else involved. But as far as my ward, I know Ward 5 is the heart of the city, it's where the city was founded, so historically, I just wanna make sure that's preserved out of everything. So, I mean, it's not about me, it's about me finding a way to make sure my ward stays, you know, protected, because there's a lot of history involved in Ward 5.
Ms. Brazil? Ms. Brazil?
Well, if I get elected, maybe ask me a couple more years from now and then I may back and see what my legacy would be, but as far as Ward 5, mostly, I went out, just by going out and meeting the people and just riding around the area of Ward 5, because it is a huge ward, and a lot of things are left undone. There are a lot of unvacant properties that's not been taken care of, there are buildings that are unoccupied, and mostly just people's property, it's not been taken, rental property that's not been taken care of, that people are actually living there and paying rent. It's for, because we have less buildings, we have more property owners and more rental property, a lot of that is in Ward 5, and I would like to see some of that reconstructed and see what we can do to help uplift certain areas of Ward 5, and there are certain areas that are in good, good shape, we need to have everything where everything looks inviting to come into the area.
I would feel very accomplished if I got to leave behind nothing but a vibrant downtown that had people walking around and enjoying shopping and dining and seeing them out with their families and enjoying the green spaces.
I've been a small business owner for more than 35 years with varied businesses that have taken me from South Carolina to Alabama Gulf Coast to Georgia Tennessee and finally back home to easily. Over that period, I've seen and experienced the positive impact of what a well-run progressive city government can do for the growth of a community, and how a poorly-run splintered city government can hold back the growth and development of a community. Over the past five or six years, I've attended most of the council meetings, gotten to know both the elected side and most of the department heads and many other employees of the city. Easily is growing, and we need to keep up with the growth. I want my legacy to be in easily that is well-run, pro-growth in business, pro-education, and above all, pro-people.
Legacy, I have no legacy, but I would like to see the streets of Ward 5 as they were when I grew up, when the people sit on the porch and you'd ride by, everybody was consumer-friendly, that means a safe environment, they felt safe to sit on their porches. I would like to see the businesses as a federal, that's why I know them, when we went downtown, they knew my name. I would like to see it when Mr. Remus Robinson, who was the police chief at that time, if I was out after 10 o'clock, he took me home. He didn't take me to jail, he took me home. And Coach Bagwell walked and he saw me doing something I wasn't supposed to do, he didn't tell me, he told my mother. So, I think what I'm saying, if we can develop that sense of community began, you go to the high school, the police department, fire department, etc., I think that that's not a legacy, that's leaving easily behind.
I'm assuming the topic's now about legacy, so, if elected, I would love living on Highway 8, be able to fix some of the traffic issues, like Ms. Webb said, about down towards easily, but with the legacy also, being the voice of the people of my ward, when my time is up, I would love for the people of my ward to be able to say, that's Seth Hunter, he was a dead gum good councilman, so, that's what I would like to see.
I'll echo my Ward 3 people, we've got a lot of growth on Highway 8, the high school certainly shook things up years ago. To get out at West End, if I forget and leave at 2:00 or 2:30, I'm like, oh, man, what I should've gone an hour ago or waited an hour. But, we're gonna have two new subdivisions, the one right near the fire department down there coming in, up on the hill across from West End is even more growth with the new housing, but apparently now all the way down 123, you know, that corridor again is gonna be something Ward 3 has to deal with. I really just hope that my ward will know I'm available. I said I've retired from teaching now, little part-time job at a golf course, so I'm available. I think I love easily enough that my common sense and working on council before will come in handy, and when they see something, they can call me, we can discuss it, and I can try to tell them why we still need to do it or why we don't. I really wanted the gym named after me, but Bagwell beat me to that, so it'll probably just be the outdoor basketball court in my neighborhood somewhere, though, you know, name that after me.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Let me find it here. We've heard your goals, but how do you envision your legacy, especially for your ward specifically and the greater good of the city as a whole?
To involve the people more and get, I would love for my legacy, if I could have an involvement and encourage people, and get the voter turnout in a city election from 5% up to 30 or 35%. Have people involved, self-governance, have people come into the city council meetings, fill that room up and find out what's going on and be part of the city, that's the legacy I'd like to leave. Get people involved, we're supposed to, we're running to represent the people, how can you represent the people if you don't know what they think and what they want? I want my legacy to be one where people are used to having a representative that cares what they think and want their input, and go out and seek it, find it, encourage it.
That's good, all right. Well done, everyone. What we're going to do now, since we're, since we're out of time, we will now hear one-minute closing statements for each ward, each candidate will be able to do this, but we're gonna go in reverse alphabetical order, so we'll be starting with you. Cindy, do you want to go this way or just wrap around again? Just wrap around, yeah, that's fine. So, we'll start with you, Mr. Williams, and then we'll go to Ms. Brazil.
My closing statement, if you take anything away from anything I said today, just know that I've always been a part of easily, my family's always been a part of easily, and we just want to see it continue to be a family-oriented place to live, you know, somewhere where your kids can grow up, your grandkids can grow up, and you feel safe being at home, you know, making sure you don't hurt or need for anything, like, just make sure everybody's healthy and happy.
Seth Hunter, if you could pass the mic down to Ms. Brazil?
I hope to encourage Ward 5 residents and an effort to ensure the knowledge of impact that planned growth and development would guide me as, and have quality of life in Ward 5. I have two personal goals that will inform, that would guide me as your representative on city council. Number one, to keep her informed, and number two, to put you first. My primary focus will be to always consider the impact that any and all actions taken in the city leaders. I have on your quality of life. My goal to the city of easily is to, again, communication and make sure that we communicate with each other, that we see what the people need and how we can do it to help, and my goal is to make sure whoever has a question or finds something that they want done and they come to me and want to, issue done, I ask that we work it together and I'll do my best to get you an answer.
Thank you again for being here this morning and taking time out of your day. I hope in this short amount of time I've been able to share with you my perspective and my beliefs for the future of easily. My goal and hopes of being on city council is because I hope that I can make a difference and I can help plan for the future of easily. I think more women should be in leadership positions, and I believe my dedication, abilities, and skillset will bring value to easily. The decisions that we make today will have a much bigger impact on those that come behind us. I encourage you to please get out and vote, please encourage your neighbors and your friends and your customers to do the same. The future of easily depends on you. Thank you.
The future of easily is first going to depend on the voters. They have the opportunity to make a statement come November 5th, but they need to get out and vote, otherwise, we're not gonna hear from them, we're not gonna hear what their goals and wants and needs are, so that's the first thing. Secondly, I want to be a part of easily, helping the guidance and the leadership to maintain the positive growth of downtown easily, of its citizens, to make it a nice place for retirees, which we already have, and by the way, that is a resource that easily needs to take more advantage of, the retirees, whether it be in a business incubator-type position or otherwise, but we've got a lot to offer here in easily, we will have that much more to offer in the future, and if elected, I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here today. If elected, I would like to see initiatives go forth to support, number one, Mr. Trump, I would like to see us do some community-based initiatives to support our children, he has a plan right now in place where we're supposed to help 3.8 million people have obtained job skills in youth, I would like to see that initiated in this community. He also has a prison reform review right now that is very successful in the state of Connecticut where they're getting training, etc., I would like to see that in place, so, if in lieu, if I were to get elected, I would like to see initiatives go forth to help people be positive.
I love the city of easily, I was born and raised here, that's where my roots are. I take pride in where I live, and I want the best for the city of easily. I want to thank everyone for being here today, and I ask you, if you live in Ward 3, vote Hunter, and I prove this message.
Again, thank you for being here, and most of you, as I said, know, I was on council before, I was raised over in that church right downtown, I go to another church downtown, taught at that high school that was downtown for a long time, so, I love the downtown of easily, I love what it's doing, how it's changing, how it's growing, I love easily. I have no agenda other than wanting to serve easily for four more years, I don't intend to make this a long-time career thing like some people have or will want to, but I do love easily, my kids raised here, I think they'll want to raise their kids here. I was involved when we started the Tiff District downtown to start with, I think that's been an incredible success allowing some of this. The first time I was on council, we passed that hospitality tax that at the time was controversial, but it snuck some people that come into easily, go to eat, paying for some of our rec complex and stuff, so I think I can help grow easily some more and just keep managing it the way it's going, but just if you want to vote for me, that'd be great, I've got three great people running against me this time, though, so in the office, I think will serve the Ward 3 people fine.
Thank you for that. Add my name to the list of people that love easily. My earliest memories are at my grandfather's car lot, which is at the corner of Russell and First, where the old post office is right across the street from the Rock House. You have to be pretty close to 60 years old to remember it being there, he passed away in the early 60s. I grew up going to Rock Springs Church and listening to Pastor Homer Couch, used to scare me to death every Sunday morning. This is my home, I'm not going anywhere, hadn't been anywhere, that I didn't return, right back here. I'm doing this, I'm coming to the end of my professional career, I'm getting ready to retire, and I would love to spend a portion of the rest of my life trying to make where I grew up and make it better if I can, hit a look for the good guy, you know, and if you like, this is nonpartisan, I'm running out of time, this is nonpartisan race, but this is one time with one candidate, politically, you know what you're getting, as chairman of the GOP in Pickens County, you know what my politics are, so, thank you all for coming out and thank you for your attention.
Well, I feel like the newcomer, I've only been here 30 years, and I've loved easily for 30 years, we loved it before we moved over here, and we've been proud to be here. I've watched previous administrations grow easily in a good direction, we are a destination, we are a place that people want to come to be, and I want to see that continue. The doodle trail, the Big League World Series, all of those things have contributed to putting us on the map, there's more out there that we can find, there's more that we will be doing. I think downtown is critical to keeping the character and the background of easily in the forefront, I want to preserve that, but we do have to have more and more growth, and to support that growth, we're going to have to have infrastructure, we're gonna have to have better planning. With my background in planning, I believe I can bring that to the table, and I would like to be able to serve the citizens of easily. One of the things I want to be able to do is shut up and listen and hear what the people are saying. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our forum, but before we adjourn, our chamber would like to thank the candidates for participating in today's forum, you all did a wonderful job in a very tough type of environment, so, great job. We appreciate your desire and willingness to serve in an elected position, I think it's wonderful to see the representation up here with so many wanting to get involved, that's great for our city. We would also like to thank the Pickens GOP for providing the opportunity to video our forums, which will allow our chamber to share this event online, we thank you very much for that. Again, thanks to Ninja Warrior Coffee House for serving as our coffee sponsor, and last but not least, we want to thank all of you for attending, and we hope you all will also attend our final candidate forum for the city of easily, which is our mayor forum next week on October 17th. Thank you, and we are adjourned.